So Sue and Chris, are you ready, you think? Got everybody in at the moment?
Um, I believe so.
All right then, if that's the case, I'm going to say, I'm going to call the Platte Township Planning Commission meeting to order. It's now seven o'clock. And I would say, everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan.
The United States of America.
Into the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. For God.
End of this call with liberty.
And justice for all.
Thank you.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Borchardt.
Here, sir.
Keith Fell.
Here.
Chris Hiltonen.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel, excused. Robert Muesling.
Here.
Whitey Simon.
Here.
Kathy Schweickert, Chair, here.
Thanks, Whitey. Item number four is approval slash amendments to agenda.
Let me just see real quick.
Where? Anybody who, anybody who's in the audience, could you mute yourself? Because it's just a little distracting at this point. You'll definitely get an opportunity to speak if you want to. But if you can mute yourself, it's just maybe meaning a little easier. We greatly appreciate it. So back to item number four, approval slash amendments to agenda.
One question on the agenda. I know last time we talked about fences and having a third option for the fences, and I didn't see it under unfinished business. I was just wondering if we were, if that was going to be here or if we're not doing that this time around.
I spoke with Rod because they had a meeting. Remember, they're supposed to have a meeting that following Monday with Gary. And apparently they're still tweaking that language, so they're not ready to come back to us yet, but it's.
They're in your next meeting.
Okay.
Danny Asher. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey Rod, what was that? What'd you say? I didn't catch that.
It'll be on for the next meeting, the March 10th.
All right, well. Okay. All right, I'll let it go for now.
I move to accept the agenda then.
I'll second.
Who was that second?
Chris.
Chris. Christine, okay.
Sorry.
We have two Chris's.
Nah. I want to go Christine and Chris. How's that?
Okay, yeah. Move to accept. Agenda. Okay. Got it down.
Sat. Um, how about roll call on that?
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Christine, Chris Hiltonen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you, Whitey. So item number, item number five would be approval of minutes.
I would move to accept the, approve the minutes as presented of the January 27th meeting of the Planning Commission, January 7th, 2021.
And that was Keith?
Yes.
I'll second that. That's Robert.
Robert, thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Whitey, roll call, please, again.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Chris Hiltonen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yeah.
Deborah, Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert.
Yes.
All right, we're doing it unanimously here.
We'll see how we do. Okay, item number six is new business, and under item number six is primary caregivers introduction discussion. I'm going to turn this over to our planners, either Rod or Eric.
Yes, thank you and good evening. This item's coming to you at the request of the Township Board. They have requested that the Planning Commission review the zoning ordinance and draft a proposed ordinance for consideration that would address medical marijuana primary caregivers. You should have a memo in your packet that provides from background. I'm just going to briefly hit the highlights. I'm not going to go into every single detail. But essentially, there was a recent Supreme Court case that verified that municipalities in Michigan do in fact have the ability to regulate caregivers that had been challenged. And the municipality Byron Township won the case. And in many municipalities are now moving forward to develop what needs to be reasonable regulations in terms of how primary caregivers are in fact permitted under the original Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, which was the very first one that was passed. So essentially, and you'll see there's something in here about the history of the term. And many communities are moving towards using the term cannabis because it's more of the scientific name rather than marijuana. So we're suggesting that if you move forward, that you use the term cannabis in the regulations. And there are other, many other examples of that, and we think there's, it's definitely worth considering. But under state law, primary caregivers can serve up to six patients. Five are other registered patients and then themselves. So five plus one, one being themselves, and you can grow up to 12 plants per patient. So that's, that's the, the maximum that's allowed by, by state law. And then you have to obviously, the, the big issue that usually triggers the discovery of this use in most communities is the electrical service. Some people try to start growing and not upgrade their electrical service and typically there are sometimes fires. Sometimes there's DTE notices it and it becomes an issue. And so obviously, it's something that needs to be addressed through appropriate retrofit. So what we've done is provided you for the framework for an ordinance that would address this particular use. And what we're looking for is some input from you in order to get the guidance that we need in order to complete this. I know the Township Board would like this done as quick as possible. So I'm just passing on that information. So we, we are not suggesting a particular zoning district. And there's, there's several options here that, that can be considered. We've talked about some of those in the memorandum. Some communities are removing them from residential districts altogether. They don't want them there. They'd rather they be, so like, for example, one of the communities I work with is going to have them only in industrial districts. So that's certainly an option. Others are recognizing that there may be some limited level of activity that might be appropriate in a residential district. And that's where they're restricting the area or the number of plants that can be grown within a particular residential district and then allowing it somewhere else at a greater intensity. So for example, we showed under number four A, one example would be you might, rather than trying to limit it to number of patients, you would just limit the area up to, as an example, 150 square feet within a single family home could potentially allow someone to serve up to two patients, depending upon how efficient their operation is and how, how they run the operation. So that's designating a small area, so at least someone could in fact provide that service at some level within a residential district. Obviously, that number could be bigger. It could be, it could be smaller. Another option would be to just eliminate it and have it only in either commercial districts or industrial districts. I mean, for example, I mentioned industrial is very popular because it's, it's considered, there's, there's the growing, there's the processing, there's the packaging. And it's something that seems to fit very well. Recognizing you don't have a significant amount of industrial land, and even your commercial land is somewhat limited. Obviously, land use case, land use considerations are, do you really want this use taking up your commercial space, for example, retail and commercial zoning? Is this the type of land use that you would prefer to have there? Or is it really more appropriate than another district? I think that's maybe one reason why other, many other communities are, are looking at going to industrial districts for this type of use. And then, of course, I mentioned the hybrid, which is the limited residential activity up to a certain square footage. And then maybe industrial for the, for a larger operation. So as we go on to page three, there's some definitions that would be appropriate. I'm not going to go into those. They're pretty straightforward. They're primarily echoing state requirements in terms of definitions. Under the U standards, so these would be standards, so what you, you would do is identify where they're going to go. And then you would come up with a set of standards that would apply. So in the case of the U standards under number A, they would only operate within a certain district or it could be an overlay district. So if you wanted to have it in several points that don't, or several areas that don't specifically line up with the zoning district, you could do an overlay district and have it cover part of industrial and part of commercial or a mix of whatever you think is appropriate. So there's a lot of different options there. And then also in terms of the, if you do allow it in a, in a commercial or an industrial area, another question that you'll have to answer is how many primary caregivers can operate on one zoning lot? Do you want to allow one? Or do you want to allow multiple, multiple primary caregivers to, to stack together basically? So that you could have an efficiency of operation where maybe four or more primary caregivers get together and, and grow independently and process independently in a building, but they're all in one building. So you may have several of them operating there. That's another, another possibility. So something for discussion. Typically, you're going to want to have a, a separation of 1,000 feet from a school, nursery school, daycare center and the like in order to comply with the federal drug-free school zone requirements. So that's certainly one thing you'll want to consider. Some communities, not all, also end up putting in a separation requirement from parks, recreation centers, drug and substance abuse centers, places of worship and other sensitive users. That's certainly up to you as to whether or not you think that's important. And then obviously, the limit of five qualifying patients is, is a state limit. Just reiterating that. And then here's where we get into at the top of page four, some of the options. Consider establishing a maximum floor area if you allow it in a residential. Another option to consider too in residential is maybe only allowing it if it's owner occupancy. Because I know what happens in some of the, in some communities have had issues with this, is people buy up a bunch of homes cheap. They end up turning them into grow houses. They don't, nobody lives there. And the, 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 they may rent it out to somebody who's going to do it. And sometimes there are some issues that are associated with that. So one thing you might, you might consider is that if it's going to be allowed in a residential district, it would be accessory to a single-family use and it would have to be an owner occupied situation where the owner has to live in the home. So that would be something to consider. The other issue is if you're going to allow multiple caregivers on one site, particularly if it's a non-residential site, how many do you want to limit it to? And it, it's another really interesting question. We've been getting some interesting testimony in other communities when this issue comes up. From one side of the coin, it sounds like a really great idea to allow multiple caregivers to go into one large building. So they should get economies of scale. After all, this is medical marijuana. You're supposed to have, for a user to use this, they have to have a card that is authorized by their physician. So this is considered to be a medical service. This is not recreational. And so the idea here is you're trying to get the cost down maybe as much as possible because it is, it is a medical service. So the theory is by having several of these primary caregivers in one building, you could have economies of scale and potentially their costs could come down. We have also have heard, however, testimony from those in the cannabis industry saying that when you allow too many of these to be in one building, it can be a place where organized crime ends up coming in and has multiple licenses and is essentially running somewhat nefarious operations that can be associated with that. There have been instances of that. I don't personally know of those, but I heard some testimony from some experts in the cannabis field indicating that that has been an issue. So these are just some things to consider. I know there are some communities that are limiting the number that can stack just so that you don't end up with, with, you know, 10 or 15 or 20 primary caregivers in a massive warehouse that where it becomes something much different than I think most communities would have anticipated. And then there's the, the enclosed locked location is very important, consistent with state law. And then also, we've got some other requirements in terms of having to meet the local building permit requirements. Those are very important that you get inspections and make sure these are going to be safe. And then also, another component of this is making sure that the operation's not visible from the exterior, nor are there odors that are able to be deciphered from the property line. Odor has been an issue with these types of facilities. And particularly when they're grown in a, in a home and someone doesn't really know what they're doing and people who are standing outside the home, walking along a sidewalk or walking in the street, may smell the operation. So there would be some odor requirements that would be incorporated this as well. Making sure that it's not discernible from the, from the property line. Another important component of it is that there would be no exchange of product between the primary caregiver and the patient on the site. Most say that's important so that it, you don't basically have what appears to be a delivery of, of drug operation on the site. It tends to work best. A lot of these facilities are doing home delivery anyway. So the, the idea here is you would have your patients, you grow for them, and then when that product is ready, you would deliver it to their home. And that way, it just, it's done that way. And that's the low-impact way of making sure. And then just making sure that these don't become party places. They're not supposed to. They're business places. No alcoholic beverages. And the like would be, would be permitted to be consumed. And just as a final note, there is a separate act that addresses, which is the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, which regulates recreational marijuana. And you may have in your home up to 12 plants for recreational purposes. And that's not, that is not, that is not regulated in this particular ordinance or by this act. It's something totally separate. The recreational is something totally separate. So just wanted to make sure, we're only talking about medical. And, and this is only primary caregivers under the original Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. So I noticed a lot of information, so I thought I would turn it back over and see if there's questions or, or comments.
May I?
Go ahead, Whitey.
How restrictive can we be in our ordinance? As you're talking about restricting the space, requiring upgrade of electricity, fans, scrubbing, and who inspects and how do we inspect?
Well, you can be restrictive to the point where it's considered to be reasonable. So there has to be a legitimate governmental purpose in what you're doing. So if you're trying to protect the health, safety and welfare, keep buildings from burning down, keep there being noxious odors, those are all legitimate public health, safety and welfare items. So if your regulations are geared towards doing that, which is having safe buildings and, and not having noxious odors, then yes, you can have reasonable standards that would protect the, the community from, from those things. But you can't make this use go away. This is a legitimate land use. The state of Michigan has determined that this is a legitimate land use. You cannot prohibit it everywhere in the township. But what you can, like any other legitimate land use, you can decide where is the appropriate location and then you can have reasonable restrictions.
Thank you.
Question, Rod. If, if we do, if we do restrict or, you know, try to regulate this portion of the medical portion of it, you just said that the recreational, we have no ability to break that. So I mean, somebody could come in and say that they're doing it for recreational growth and then, you know, we have no, no way to regulate the odor and the lights and all that on that. Is that true?
That's true, but, but they're going to be limited. Obviously, this is not going to be somebody growing 72 plants. They're going to be limited to just to the plants for them. So it's, yes, you can't do much about that. However, if, if they are causing an issue with utilities and there's a safety issue, then they are, they are going to have to still address safety issues related to utilities. And if they're, if they need to upgrade their electrical system, they may need to get a permit for that. You, you still have the ability to, to enclose reasonable regulations and your building codes all apply to these uses.
So should we, I mean, should we be looking at a total ordinance for marijuana instead of just addressing one portion? Or do we address the one portion first and then?
You, the Township Board is only interested in addressing primary caregivers. They have not indicated that they want to opt in to medical or recreational on a business level. So they are not asking for you to look at that.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we start with some very pointed ordinances. And the first one would be, you have to own the home in order, in order to provide, to be a caregiver. You can't rent a home. You can't leave the home in order to process the product.
I'd like to go one step further and restrict it from residential areas.
Yeah, I agree with that. I was thinking, I was thinking about restricting it to industrial.
I agree.
Not to limit it, but based on our infrastructure. An industrial area is already going to have the electrical infrastructure that can handle that type of demand. Whereas any residential and maybe even some commercials probably are not set up for that.
Well, typically, in full play, six, are you talking about what, 72 plants or something like that? If a caregiver is doing it. And how much electricity do you need to provide enough?
Juice.
We are talking about it being a business as well, right? We're, we're talking about this being a business. So does it belong in residential neighborhoods? I mean, if you, if you take it, you know, take the marijuana portion out of it and just consider it as a business, I mean, we wouldn't want an auto shop next to your home ran out of a house. And there's reasons why we, we put things in different districts. So just looking at it as a business aspect, I think industrial for this would be, would make sense.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but you may have a hardship for those caregivers that are, that can't rent another building. So if, if we, what about proximity of homes? You know, they have to be, you know, what, 300 feet away or 200 feet away from one another or something? You can't be within, you know, 150 feet of another residential home? Just throwing it out, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, what I was kind of thinking, Rod, you were, you were saying that recreationally, they can do 12 plants. Well, what if, what if, if they're going to have it in a residential area, that caregiver can only grow what they can use for themselves, restricted to the 12 plants?
That's correct.
If, right, if you, if you have the primary caregivers operating in another district and not in residential, then you would just be, the, the recreational is what would generally apply. Or if you have a license, if you had a medical, you could grow it under medical too. I mean, just for yourself.
How can you have more than one, one person in a home growing for recreationally? You have five people in your family.
I believe you can, but I'm, I'm, I would, I believe you can, but I, I would not want, that's not really the topic today, so I, we're on the medical, but yeah, I, I believe that could happen.
Okay, and would you restrict that?
You cannot, you, I don't believe you can regulate the, the recreational. I'm not aware of, that might be a question for your Township Attorney.
So if I may, getting back to the electrical infrastructure thing, I just looked this up and an average, one average grow lamp is going to draw approximately nine amps. And for those of us not very well versed in electricity, that's a lot. You could not put two of those on a single circuit without really taxing out the, the circuitry in a home. Which leads, brings me right back to limiting it to industrial because, I mean, I have no expertise on how many grow lamps are required for this thing, but I'm assuming they're going to take more than one to do 72 plants to provide enough, enough light to make these things grow. Again, I'm no expert on the grow lamps, but I do know quite a bit about, you know, electricity and the amp draw requirements. And I don't think many, if any, homes are designed to handle that kind of a draw.
Right, and there's cooling and fans. There's, there's a whole, there's a lot of electricity used.
Exactly.
And definitely not on 14 wire.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly.
I have a question, Rod. If a particular property is owned R M and R one, what we're talking about right now, we're not talking about possibly allowing this ordinance in that zoning? Is that what you're referring to at the moment?
Well, I, I know that, that's, that's one of the, of the questions. One of the things that, 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 you know, for example, you could potentially allow it in just, if you were going to allow it in residential, you could do it like an RS one through R three maybe and have all those residential districts included if you wanted to do that. I don't know if you want to do it in R four or not. But you know, that's a, that's a question for you to decide what you think is most appropriate. But you can have it, if you're going to allow it in the residential, you probably want to have it in all the single-family districts. That's typically where it goes. Unless there's a particular unique circumstance, it's not typically, I don't see many communities allowing it in multiple family. But you certainly could if you wanted to. It's much more complicated with electrical and the like when you're in a multiple family situation. So typically it is, I think, mostly found within, if it's in residential, it's in single-family districts.
And if they were zoned at the moment, um, and I know we talked already about the, the smell not at the property line to exceed it. It already is. Um, and something's already in existence.
That's going to be an interesting question for the Township Attorney in terms of what, what, what the status is of anybody currently operating, whether or not that's considered legal and whether or not it then becomes legal, non-conforming once this ordinance goes into place. So that is probably a question best answered by the Township Attorney.
And have you, I noticed that there were some emails between us and Mr. Bryson and have you personally spoken to the Township Attorney? Because those would be the people who will be defunding us if anything gets put into effect.
I have not. We were, we were, I mean, the Township Attorney has received the same correspondence you, you have tonight. And once we get to the point where we have a draft ordinance, then certainly they will receive it then and we will seek more input.
Okay.
Rod, what other communities have you addressed this with?
Um, I'm currently working with Farmington Hills. They are going to move it all into industrial. New Baltimore has originally had the caregivers in the industrial district and then they've now expanded to allow medical, commercial medical marijuana as well as recreational marijuana in the industrial district. So they've kind of gone step by step to allow various types going through. We're working now with, let's see, I think we, we're writing ordinances with, working with Lathrow Village. I think Chesterfield, Madison Heights did it. And also in terms of the larger operations, Orion Township, we were their consultant and we're reviewing massive warehouse grow operations there because they allow recreational and medical grow operations, processing the whole deal. And Eric and I are the planners there and we, seems like we have a site plan every month for a new massive industrial. And that's in industrial districts, a massive industrial warehouse processing facility that's growing and processing.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't want to see something like that here, but getting back to the electrical, Keith, maybe you could ask it, or maybe I see Gary's on too. What's the maximum voltage going into a home that actually is permitted on a, if there is a permit or, or a max capacity of electricity going into a house?
I know you get probably answered better, but typically what we see in a home is two, is a 220 volt or 240 volt system as opposed to an industrial or commercial area where it wouldn't be uncommon to see as high as 483 phase. But I think most of your residential is going to be your 240 volt single phase.
Yeah, I understand a 240, that, that's fine. But if, if someone to put in a 480, is that within you know, safety, safety aspects of a residential home, Gary?
Oh, what, what I found with the power and, and and I have some other input here if I could, but as far as the power is concerned, for just running a house
as far as the power is concerned, for just running a house, in most cases, you're between 100 and 200 amp services, what we're seeing. Uh, we do have, uh, a couple of these that we know about and we actually get, uh, notified by the power company, uh, when they're asking for additional, uh, more than 200. Um, you know, we've got one, uh, that's got a 300 amp service. Uh, the other one I think is about the same. Um, so if they get, uh, clearance and, and the power company doesn't want to turn them down. If they're asking for 300 amp or 400 amp service, uh, they're afraid to get sued. So they're providing that service to them. Uh, and then, you know, the, the correct power lines, uh, from the pole, uh, to the service panel are all upgraded to handle that power. Uh, and then how they break it down from theirs is up to them and their needs. Um,
Uh, hey, what, what about the internal wiring of the house? Say the house is 50 years old. Kind of impacting, is that going to happen to the wiring?
Yeah, it, you know, it's all done through the breaker system. So you're not going to be pushing high power through a 14, uh, wire, if you will. Uh, that's going to be on a whole different panel, uh, that's going to a whole different situation when you're talking about these grow operations. Uh, so they, they don't intertwine really. They're going to be, uh, uh, separate, uh, separated and, and it's going to be separated by that, uh, uh, breaker. But if I could also add some things, uh, you know, there's three different things here. There's, um, just medical marijuana, which uh, I know enough to be dangerous, but I'm no expert. Uh, and, and they're different. Uh, a medical, uh, marijuana operation is different than a caregiver, uh, operation. Those are two different things. And then of course recreation is on its own. Um, what we've got right now, and I'm sure that there's more than I know about. Uh, but within the last month, we've been in two grow operations within residential districts. And, um, uh, you know, if they do it right, you, you don't smell it even outside the door of the facility. Uh, they've got charcoal filtering systems that really take away the odor from the neighborhood. Uh, you know, from anything surrounding right away. Uh, so usually, uh, the smell of it is not evident until you actually get inside the room. And even inside the facility, until you get inside that room, you don't, you don't smell it either. Um, what worries me is, uh, what's called an extraction process. And if they're just growing marijuana in residential, it's probably not as harmful. Um, because they're just growing plants, they're just growing the green, uh, and then removing the green and then taking it to their patients or whatever. Uh, the extraction process though, is where they squeeze the plants through, uh, fuels and chemicals to extract it and turn it into oils. Uh, that's a very dangerous operation. Uh, that can require, uh, you know, fire and, um, mechanicals, fire suppression systems. Um, we would want to definitely make sure that those type of systems, which, you know, they're dangerous, but to keep those strictly in industrial, uh, where they can be better controlled, uh, would be highly suggested. Um, the other ones, the other two operations that I've been into, one's inside of a, an attached garage, the other's in a pole barn. And outside of that room, you can't, you can't smell it. You don't know what's going on in there. You don't see anything from the outside. Uh, and it's not, it's not so bad. Um, and no one around, especially if you don't have, you know, the patients coming to the facilities. Uh, would anybody know the difference? Uh, that's just if they're done right and you know, that's what we can do. Uh, we can regulate that, um, through permit processes, making sure that they have the proper, uh, you know, uh, systems in place to make sure that that smell, uh, doesn't get out into the neighborhood. So, uh, but, but yeah, so however you wanted to handle that, uh, as far as residential, know that we have two already, uh, that I know about, and I'm sure that there's more. This is a hot topic. Uh, and they're popping up all over. We're actually, uh, Cindy in our office was in contact with the power company today. Uh, about, you know, we having a little closer relationship to know when these higher, uh, uh, demands are being asked for, um, and then, uh, at least letting us know and, and then maybe we can find out if it, what it's for, if it is for grow operation and most likely it is. Uh, but the extraction process is, is really what, uh, what scares me and it really does because I, I think it's just that dangerous.
How many plants were they growing at those two facilities?
Um, both of them, because they had them squeezed into one room, um, was more than the 12 plants. But, but right now we're working through the process to know how many, uh, caregivers they have. Because each caregiver, uh, can, can grow, you know, uh, can have the, the, the six patients or five patients. Five patients and themselves.
Yeah.
And they're each allowed 12 plants.
Right.
So the rooms have been crowded that I've seen so far, uh, but both parties are aware of, of the 12, uh, plants per patient. So.
Okay.
Eric, can I ask you a question? Cause you sound like you've had some experience in this. Have you been to any facility, um, not facility, I shouldn't say, any, um, operation on the island? Because you caught my attention with the, um, odor factor. Type scenario that you can't really smell it if they're doing it correctly. Have you been to any of them on the island by chance?
I've, I've been to the one that I know about. If there's more than one there, um, I don't know about the other ones. Uh, but I have.
About the one on, I'm sorry to interrupt. How about the one on South Channel? That's the one I'm referring to.
Yes, I have been there.
And do you think they're operating as far as the odor part goes correctly?
I think that they are, but quite frankly, when we, uh, did the inspections there, they had all the systems in place, uh, but they were not operating yet. And one of the things that we can do on a caregiver type of, uh, operation is that we can go in there. Uh, we can't write violations, but we can go in there and inspect anytime that we want. And I'm sure that they are probably up and operating at this point. Uh, cause we, we filed out those permits, um, uh, last year in, in 2020. Uh, so I'm sure that they're operating now. And when I go by there, my, my head does turn in that direction to see if I see any activity or anybody there. And I rarely see anyone even there. But, uh, but I would agree with you Kathy, that it's, it's probably time that, uh, that we at least go over there and say, okay, you've had time. Now you're up and operating to make sure that they are keeping it odor free. Are you finding that there are odors?
If we're talking the one on Green Drive, you can ask any of the neighbors that there's extremely strong odors. It's kind of a laughing stock. As far as that, you can be driving your boat down the river and you come into a wall of odor.
Okay.
Um, that, not to mention the fact that the ventilation system, the clinging and banging of that going on and the, um, lighting that blows all night long.
Okay. And do me a favor and I don't.
So you caught my attention with that. So if we're talking in there and that's, and that's in our one and our, um, district right there.
And if we're talking about the same place, uh, and I don't know if we want to mention the address on here, but shoot me an email.
Sure.
With the, the, uh, address on that property and make sure that we are talking about the same one to begin with.
I have no problem with that.
We would be happy to, to go over and make sure that that's not the case, uh, on the one that we approved anyways.
Okay, at least the one you approved. I'm just curious because if you're in a residential district and if it happens to be what we're experiencing, I would think the rest of the neighbors would not be quite happy with that.
Yeah.
It's a very strong, yeah.
Yeah.
So I can understand some of that.
And know that the, uh, the two that we are working with right now, uh, and we're, we're early in the process, uh, getting, get their, their permits after discovery. Uh, and we're getting a little resistance on one, but the other one is, is really, uh, um, really stepping up and trying to, to do it. And, and I personally did a walkthrough on both of these, uh, investigating whether or not we had an operation or whether or not, um, you know, we didn't know what we're talking about. But, um, on both of those, um, ones that are clearly within residential, uh, I got my sniffers on and I could not smell, uh, anything outside of that building. So, uh, if it's done right, if it's done right, then you know, there is a way to control it. I do know though, that, um, you know, when we're talking about the grow operation, when the plants are young, uh, and even teenagers, they, they don't smell. When they become mature, uh, and ready for harvest, that's when they really do, uh, emit a heavy smell. Uh, so difference, uh, in the timing of the growth of them, uh, really tell, you know, also, um, you know, determine how strong the smells are.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from planning commission members or comments?
I have a comment. Um, sure. How do you know the difference between your, if you're smelling a grow operation or a personal use operation? That's one situation. Uh, and what, in reading these proposals for the use standards, one of the heavy, um, requirements that we could have would be um, the screening of windows, um, you know, no exterior, um, identification. I don't, I don't think anyone would know. So if it wasn't a residential district, it's not like they have a sign hanging outside because it's, they actually have patients that they're servicing. Um, so they're not dealers per se, you know, they're actually doctors, not doctors, but fighters.
For all intents and purposes.
Pardon me?
For, for all intent and purposes of this.
Well, that, you know, yes. And I think if we do this correctly, you know, with the scrubbers and all that, um, no one would be none the wiser that this operation's going on. And I do like the idea of limiting to owners of, of occupied. I think that's important because we've seen all over Detroit and whatnot, these homes that are just full of plants and nobody actually lives there, which is not good.
Hey Gary, did you look at the home on McKinley?
Yes, sir. And that's got, uh, just so you know, that's got three separate rooms, um, back in there. And, um, it, if, if any operation is top notch, that's probably one of them. Uh, so far it seems like, uh, it's just a top notch situation going on there. Uh, and that's definitely one of the places that even when I'm inside of that building, I can't smell it until I actually go inside of one of the rooms. Um, but, uh, yeah, even though they started off on the wrong foot and not obtaining the proper permits, uh, it looks like they've got the proper licensing through the state to be, uh, to, for the caregivers, um, in that. But there are three separate rooms in there, um, that are going to be poised for, you know, multiple growers, if you will.
So you could have three times, uh, 72 plants there or not?
That's, that's correct.
That looks like more, more like a commercial operation than just a caregiver operation, but that's okay.
Uh, and that's why this is before you to determine how far you think that should go in a residential area.
I, I don't think, uh, three, uh, different operations at 72 plants each in a residential area is probably a little too much.
That's also a, a rental home too.
Oh God.
Right?
Yeah, according to the, to the owner, I spoke to, uh, claims, uh, that they are going to eventually move into that property. Um, who's to say at this point?
Yeah, but if you have three of those operations, only one is the owner operator, right? The others are guest operators, if you.
Correct. So when you, you make ordinances that say that, you know, only the owner occupant, uh, can grow, um, then yeah, that's going to pose a problem. Like Rod had said, you know, and you, when you do have multiple growers, um, you know, and putting it in one spot, uh, it will allow for them to bring the price down. It's my understanding that caregivers, um, the operations of the caregivers, they're not supposed to make a profit uh, off of this stuff. They're able to charge what it takes to, to grow them and maintain them. And that includes the property and taxes and everything else. Uh, but it's supposed to be a break even situation. Whether or not.
Creative bookkeeping.
Yeah, whether or not that's true, I, I have no.
I am a cynic when it comes to that.
Uh, per the state, that's what, uh, that's what they, uh, they say.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Oh, you can't pull in an hourly wage?
Well, you can charge your hourly wage as part of the cost of the grow, uh, for sure.
And the rental?
Yes.
May I ask another question?
Sir.
Gary, when you were talking about this extraction process and oils, does anybody understand? Uh, cause I don't, if they're only allowed plants as patients. So in other words, are they allowed to do these oils as well for their patients? Does anybody know that?
The, I believe the statute has been amended to allow for infused products to be used.
Okay, so they don't need, uh, to report that to anybody. It's just, this is what we're doing. I don't know how you'd disseminate, you know, 72 plants versus oils, but. Okay.
Well, my point would be is that where we have this extraction process, uh, or infusion, uh, where that type of, of, uh, process is going on, not to allow that in residential.
Right.
Um, on both, both of our properties that we have in residential that I know about right now, uh, that is one of my questions, um, is are you doing the extraction process here? And thank goodness, both of those are, you know, we grow it green and, and we distribute it green. So they don't, uh, they don't do the extraction, which is a good thing. Uh, cause in a neighborhood, that could make it dangerous. Uh, you know, the high probability of fires and, uh, even explosions can, can happen at that point. So, uh, I would suggest that, um, even if we would allow the grow operation, um, you know, the caregiver operation in residential, that we disallow extraction. If you wanted the extraction, you, you take it to industrial.
That's wise.
I, is there a written, uh, uh, standard operating procedure for extraction process, uh, buildings? Such as you, you mentioned the fire protection, suppression systems and all that, uh?
Yeah, there, there is some, uh, state, uh, regulations that, that, uh, look at the extraction process and what's required and who needs to be notified and what systems need to be in place. Uh, so the, uh, the state has got some things on the books already, uh, when it comes to extraction process. So, you know, that is something that we can pull right from state of Michigan, uh, and make sure that these are, uh, are, are done, uh, you know, per the letter of that, that code for sure.
So I guess we can, this point right now that, uh, all expression processes must be done in a, uh, uh, industrial, uh, setting in an approved industrial building. Does everybody agree with that?
I like the term growing green. That should be in our, in our ordinance. That's the only thing that's allowed in the residential, definitely.
My, my question would be is if they say they're just going to grow and they're not do, going to do the extraction process and they end up doing the extraction, extraction process, what repercussions would they have? Because as we know that we've had an issue in the past with,
Ignoring the ordinance.
Ignoring the ordinance. Thank you, Whitey.
You're welcome.
It would be like a violation of your zoning ordinance, like any violation. It'd be treated the same way.
If you shut the power off.
In the middle of February.
So I guess Rod, I'm going to ask you this question. You're looking for input from us on how to, um, fill in the blanks, maybe move this towards a public hearing with language that we could bring to a public hearing. Is that kind of?
That is absolutely correct. Yes.
So planning commission members, I guess we need to be a little bit more specific what we're looking for. If you feel that you're ready to maybe give Rod and Eric some direction.
Yeah, well, I already said the extraction processes, so that has to be, uh, uh, separated between any.
At that.
I agree.
Yep.
I, I think owner operator, uh, should also be in there.
What's that, Whitey?
Thank you. Owner operator.
Owner operator for residential districts, right?
And I don't believe we should have multiples in the, uh, residential as, uh, Gary was telling us there. I don't believe.
So do you want to, do you want to allow a full operation of seven, up to 72 plants within a residential for one person to grow?
If the space is there, I, and it's properly protected, no sound, no extraction, no smell. I don't see why. I don't see why we should restrict it if we have the owner operator who is also a user in his house. I, I wouldn't mind that.
I have a question.
Hi Christine.
Is there a way to limit the amount of these homes in a residential area as to how many in one area can actually be?
Like a density?
I mean.
Could we specify that no two operations can be closer to one another than a thousand feet, five hundred feet, whatever it is? That way you could restrict it already something because I, I saw we can restrict it a thousand feet from all these other buildings.
I guess the question becomes if they're going, if you're going to put these restrictions in place where theoretically aren't going to be able to smell them and they're going to be limited in size, is there really any significant benefit to trying to limit the number of them and the adjacency of them?
Well.
It can get complicated. You may get, you may find you get challenged because somebody's living next door to one and they can't do it. And they say, hey, I can only do a certain amount and I don't want to follow all your regulations. I'm just, I'm just telling you, it could open up a door for, for that. Cause I'm not telling you can't do it. I'm just saying that you can be.
No, you're right. I'm just thinking that when the equipment starts to break down and you start smelling it, two, three houses next to each other, you're getting a nice whip and you don't have to be a caregiver. You don't have to be a medical marijuana user. You don't have to be a recreational user. You get it free of charge.
I mean, there is some, there, there is something to be said though, and, and, and I'm not necessarily telling you no to that. But I, think about the potential impacts. You've got two items on your agenda tonight.
Yeah.
Caregivers and vacation rentals. So imagine a block where the majority of, of, of a street ends up with a combination of primary caregivers and vacation rentals. One of the, one of the, one of the risks you have is that you start to lose the cohesiveness of a neighborhood.
Yes.
And you start to lose the eyes on the street, the people looking out for neighbors. And it could lead to a degradation of, of residential character. So it, it is something to consider because these can all have a cumulative impact on how a residential area functions. So I, I, I said, I'm just saying you could receive some challenges. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying, just be prepared that if you're going to try to limit them, what's going to be the basis for limiting them? And that, that will be a question that will come up is why did you pick this number, this separation? And so that's just something that has to be carefully thought of.
We depend on your advice for that.
I don't know of any of my clients that are doing a separation, so I haven't really studied that particular issue on, on this subject.
Rod, did you say most of your clients are not doing this in residential areas?
The ones we're working with, most of them are not. I do know some though, that are allowing it in a smaller defined area. They're not going with the full seventy-two plants. They're going with something smaller.
Okay.
And others aren't even hardly regulating it. They're letting it go however people want. So it's all over.
How much does it cost to get one of those operations going?
I have no idea.
Let me ask you this. Okay. If you restrict it to industrial to start out with and see how that goes, we could always come back, I suppose, which we know that takes a process to do, but then anybody who's in residential right now would not be operating legally? Is that the whole idea?
Well, not necessarily. That's a question. That's a legal question. They, they may have some protection because of the way the law was structured at the time and before this Supreme Court ruling came down. That, that's really more of a legal opinion. But I would, I would tend to say that if you primarily want these in industrial, you have, you do have a limited amount of industrial land. I would consider and ask you to consider at least allowing some level of this in residential. And you mean, you don't have to allow, you can do the full seventy-two plants or you can do something less than that. And I think if you're concerned about it in residential, then allow for a smaller area of, of, of growing and allow for at least some operation to take place in residential. That's just, that's just a thought I have, just because you're not a community that's got a huge industrial park where you can just shove, shove everybody out there. It's, it's, it's a little more challenging to do that.
Yep.
Rod, I have a question.
Yes.
Could we, as opposed to like what Whitey or I forget who now, I think it was what he had suggested, having this distance between homes, can we limit the number of homes? In, in general, like say we're, we're only going to allow ten percent of the, the homes in the township to be used for this purpose. And then once that ten percent is hit, then no more. And then going further from there, then if they wanted to, then they could do industrial or commercial.
If that's found to be reasonable, I don't know of that being in place. I would, if I were going to go, if you wanted to go that route, I'd be more interested in limiting it to a certain number or percentage on a single block or street. Cause then if you, if you said fifteen, ten percent of the homes, then all of them could be on one street crammed in. So that, that would be my concern about that is it doesn't really help you from over concentration.
Okay. So we, but we could in fact limit it to, you know, ten percent of the homes on this street.
I don't know that that would hold. I'm not going to tell you that's going to hold up. I'm going to tell you what is, you're going to be asked, what's the basis for the ten percent? And so that's, that, we don't know until it's challenged whether or not it's going to hold up.
So Tuna, you got anything you want to add to this or?
I still like it in an industrial district. I'm, I'm not in favor of it in residential.
No, I, I agree with you, Chris. I agree one hundred percent. I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can not get the township sued and have some happy medium.
Yeah, I think just, I think restricted it and, and, you know, try a percentage or something like that. I think it's a, the, the thought and the idea is great. But I, you know, I think I agree with Rod that, you know, that you just open yourself up for lawsuits or trouble by telling somebody they can't, somebody they can't, you know, keep it in certain districts makes sense. Yeah, I, I think it's an industrial use. That sort of belongs.
Yeah.
No, I agree.
If we were going to, if we were going to do the residential, maybe Rod's suggestion is not doing at the max of seventy-two plants if.
That's what I was going to ask. What, what is the approximate? Because I have no idea about any of it. So what is the approximate area that a mature plant would take up?
According to the research we have done, it's suggesting somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four, three to four square feet per plant.
So and say a twelve by twelve room, that's a hundred and forty-four square feet divided by say four, so that's thirty-six plants.
Well, the example we gave you in here is if you had a hundred and fifty square feet, we think it would probably serve in the ballpark of about twenty-four plants with, if you allow for some room for processing. So the whole room's not filled with growth. You have to have some aisles and you have to have room for processing. Just as an example, a hundred and fifty square feet might allow somewhere in the ballpark of twenty-four plants based on those numbers.
So I mean, I guess if we were to restrict the residential for size would restricting it by a percentage of the square foot of, of the living area of the, of a house per se.
That's one approach. The other is to, to limit it to a maximum square footage, which is what I'm seeing done more that, that way you, that's the biggest operation you can get in a single family home is X square feet devoted to this use. I think that's, that might be a better approach.
How would we go about enforcing that?
They're going to have to come in for building, well, they're going to have to get a permit through the process. They would be an administrative permit because they'd be a permitted use and they'd go in and they'd get permitted. They'd have to make sure the building code is up. They were in, in conformance with the building code. And that's when they're tied, you'd have an inspection, just like you would any land use to make sure that the, that they're, they're operating in the way they should. I mean, obviously typically I just get, Gary, where I tell you, you get more of that when they first open. Cause you want to make sure that it's in compliance. And then after that, it's usually based on are there complaints? Are there issues? You know, when is there an issue where you need to go and, and do that? It's, it's much harder once they're up and, up and running, but certainly when they first operate, you have the ability to make sure they're in compliance.
Yeah, sure. Let me add by saying that both of the ones that I know about in our residential districts, they didn't come forward right away. We ended up catching them. And we didn't catch them because we could smell it or we had neighbor complaints because of it. I think what you risk is that they're just going to open and now they're going to open without permits. They're going to start the operation without getting those inspections, without having the proper state authority and, and approval rather. And that's what we're up against. Both the, these properties that I'm speaking of, both of them did not come forward. It was through, you know, our power company that let us know, hey, they, they've got some bigger services that allowed, you know, that, that really started the ball rolling from us to let's investigate. And one of them, it took us over a year to actually get inside of that. And it, it took a letter from our attorney to, to get some action in that regard, because they were just ignoring us. With these operations, they're just going to open. They're just going to do it. And they're not going to do it based on whether or not we approve or don't approve. You know, you make it user friendly and then they're more apt to, to come and make sure that they get the proper permits and, and we go out there and inspect it, make sure that it's safe to operate, you know, wherever they're operating, you know, definitely you want to make sure that when it's in a dense electric or residential area. But still you don't want the, the place next to you burning up because they did something wrong and illegal. And if we too, put too many restrictions on them, they're just going to do it anyways and just avoid us.
Gary, I think to your point that even, even if we do allow it, you're still going to have the people that ignore you and avoid you anyway, because they don't want you in there. They're not going to do it correctly. So if you restrict it from the residential zone, that becomes unacceptable in residential. You would think it'd be easier enforcement at that point than trying to disseminate who's, who's doing it the right way and who's doing it the wrong way. I don't know if that makes it cleaner. I don't know. I get, I'm just against it in residential.
I don't disagree with what Krista said. Unfortunately, looking at Clay Township right now and what we have for commercial and industrial, that, that's where maybe from a legal point of view and trying to have our attorney defend this township, I can see where there might be a difficulty if we don't make some accommodations somewhere in the residential, but on a very, very limited basis possibly like Rod's maybe suggested.
Yeah, like Kathy, may I say four A? That is a little somewhat palatable because it limits to twenty-four plants. And if the people want to grow their operation, they do have the ability to go into an industrial situation. And if they want to do that infusion extraction process, because we do want people to grow their business. It's a legal business, you know, whether we like it or not. So if we did four A, you know, which is limiting, you know, put some language in there about that. And then say, other than that, in industrial use, if you want to do the extractions.
Or more plants.
Or more plants, certainly. I mean, that makes sense to me.
I mean, it's not ideal what I would be worrying, but I guess we're trying to weigh with our community that we have in the zonings that we have, how do we make this
Right.
work. And Chris, I don't disagree with what you said. It just, I'm trying to.
But you don't want the people going underground either.
I think we'll still have some of that because that's some.
You're right. The only thing is when you start to restrict the size for twenty-four plants, you know, somebody will complain that they want to have an extra six more and so on and so forth. And they'll do the same thing and object to that as well as being demanded to be doing it in the industrial area. The, the sad part is that we don't have a large industrial area where you could have more than one or two growers or I shouldn't say growers.
And that's why I would suggest that you're not actually basing on plants. I would base it on area. If you go with a hundred and fifty square feet and then it's just, it's an area that can be easily measured and determined. And then it's, that's it. That makes, I think it makes it much easier to manage that way.
Gary can walk in with his yo-yo and decide whether there are the hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty square feet.
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I would say it definitely needs to be restricted to single family homes and not be allowed in multi-family housing.
Definitely.
So no duplexes or anything.
So all, all single family districts, no multiple family limit to an area of potentially a hundred and fifty square feet, no extraction, owner, owner, operator, owner occupied in the residential district. And then everything else would go into the industrial districts.
That sounds good.
And then in the industrial districts, do you want to limit the number of caregivers that go, go into a single building? Do you have any concern about that? Or do you want to just see how it goes? Or do you want to put a, a number limit on it?
I would, I would prefer a limit because you never know how far they'd go. And I am a cynic. I don't believe the cost benefits of multiples in one building wouldn't be passed on to the poor, sick person that needs the reduction in cost.
Can we base that on square footage, Rod?
Um, but I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Pretty caregivers for a hundred, for three hundred square feet or something like that.
Oh, limit their area. Well, and once you're in industrial, I think you want to allow them to have the full seventy-two, seventy-two plants. So I don't, I don't know if I would do that because then it's in a district, you really probably want it to happen. So I would, I would just allow them to be at the maximum level that the state allows for caregivers. But I think the question is how many of those licenses would you allow to be on one zoning lot?
Well, there's some.
When that, in the size of the building?
Well, obviously the building's going to, but if you had a big enough building, then you know, how many do you want to do, do, do a limit to a certain number? They still have to meet all the requirements.
Right. Well, I like the idea, if we have limited industrial here, that they do sublease or however they, however we figure it out. If we have a big empty building somewhere, why wouldn't we want, you know, multiple users to go in there? And not spread out through the community, just go into, you know, a fifty thousand square foot building that's sitting empty. And then they could, you know, divvy it up. However.
And, and just be prepared to, you probably are likely see some, you may see some petitions for some additional industrial land if this takes off. And you may have rezonings come before you to open up more land. And that, that could happen, but then again, that's, that's industrial based though. So.
No, Rod, did I see in here somewhere that if you have more than one caregiver in a building, that their products have to be separated and locked up in different rooms or?
They have to be locked separately. Yeah, you're required to, as, as by state law, you have to take care of your own product for your, for your patients.
So I, I think I'd be okay with a few. I don't know if I'd want ten or twenty caregivers in one building, but you know, if there's three to five, maybe I could see the possibility of that.
Okay, so maybe like five.
I would agree with Robert on that one. I'm not sure if I want to just let it go.
Right.
Free for all type thing. I'm not sure that's correct terminology. Rod, what, what's the ramifications if a facility or whatever, they're not following the rules?
Just like any zoning violation.
That's just typically that's it. There's nothing else. Okay.
Well, if you're, if you're violating state law, you may have to deal with the state and separate prosecutions from the state if they're, if you're not filing state law. But in terms of this particular ordinance, if it's enacted, you would be in violation of the zoning ordinance and you would treat it like any zoning violation.
Okay.
So you know, can I ask another question, please? You know, if the state comes in and does audits, I, I would think they would have, if they're licensing these people, I would think that they would.
I'm not aware. I don't know if Gary has heard of that.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that, that the state and the township, we can have an inspection anytime we want. And that's with the state too. And that's with the state too. State can go into these facilities at any time. Now, what their manpower situation is, whether they're doing it or not, I I don't know about that. But as a township, we may not be allowed to write violations when we go in, but we can go in and inspect anytime that we want. Just to add something, you know, I think in residential, I think limiting it to an owner occupant, I think that's an easy to do. I don't think we'll find or be challenged on that at all. But Rod, what do you think? Will there be challenges if if this state allows for, you know, five patients plus one? And the twelve plants per person, would that part of it be challenged? If we restrict the number of plants or even the the space that's allowed? Yeah.
I I think it would if you weren't allowing it somewhere else. Okay, so if you if that was the only place where you could do it would be in residential and you were not allowing somebody to go up to the seventy-two plants, I think that would be problematic. But if if you're allowing it in a different district, then I think then that covers that. Now, I'm not giving you a legal opinion, and this is something we will talk to your township attorney about with the draft, and we will get that input. But I I'm less concerned with that if you're allowing a full operation of seventy-two plants in a different district. Because you're not excluding that maximal operation within the township.
Rod, are you dealing with Janelle on this particular ordinance draft?
That is my understanding.
Okay, just clarification, so I know who we're dealing with. So what do you need from us now, Rod? Other, we've gone back and forth on a couple of difference.
I think we've covered everything that I needed in order to get a draft together. Just checking my notes here real quick. Did you want to have any type of separation from parks and recreation? Places like that, is that something that is of an issue? Or if it's just, I mean, if it's in a residential, it's gonna be limited in area. So maybe that's not an issue in but in in if it's in industrial, it's already an industrial area. So you could have a lot of other uses there that could impact some of these, and they're not gonna have those. So I I'm just asking the question. I know it it may sound like a good idea, but sometimes when you're dealing with the way you're proposing to regulate this, you're keeping it very limited in residential. And industrial is already industrial where you potentially have intense uses anyway. So do you really need to have any additional separation from those other users there? I'm just pointing that out, but it's it's up to you in terms of what you feel comfortable with.
You mean as far as a residential, like keeping it away from nursery, school and all that stuff?
Yeah, right. Yeah, particularly in the industrial area. I mean, I don't know if you have a lot of concern about having schools or places of worship or parks that may be impacted by your industrial area there, but I'm I'm not, I I don't know that you necessarily need to do that, but if you feel strongly about it, I certainly want to reflect your desires.
So Rod, you're talking about caregivers and having, say, three or four houses together being providers.
No, no, that 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 is not the situation here. What I'm talking about is right now, if I went into an industrial district and opened my operation, and there happened to be a church next door, I wouldn't have to be that's I wouldn't have to have any separation requirements from that. Just if I'm any industrial use, I don't have to worry about it. As long as you know that that's the case, that if a cannabis operation goes in, they won't have to have any separation from one of those users as well, then that's fine. But I'm just saying that that's 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 really the issue here is whether or not you think there needs to be any additional separation. I'd be cautious just because you have limited industrial land and putting additional restrictions on that land might be problematic in terms of separation from from some of these other uses.
If it was a set of a separation, if they were certain requirements, if you are within a certain distance from a church or or a school, that you at least have a vapor.
Well, that's already in the regulations. The odor controls are already in there.
So under use standard under C, that covers most of it. You're asking if we need additional, and I don't think we do. I think that covers most of what we're looking for.
Yeah, because you're it's covering that thousand foot is already the drug-free zone, so that you're you're not gonna have any of these within a thousand feet of a school, nursery, school, daycare or whatever, so.
Yeah. I think that's a good one.
Anything else you need from us, Rod, now that you reviewed it?
That's it. However, keep in mind that typically that thousand-foot radius, we would typically apply that to the industrial user and not to the person having the small operation in the single-family home. And making sure you're comfortable with that.
So if you're saying there's if you're saying there's a home next to a school?
Or daycare, say someone's running a daycare out of their home, and the person next door wants to do a hundred and fifty square feet of grow operation, that wouldn't be restricted necessarily.
And federally, that's not restricted? Residential?
I'm not too comfortable with that. Neither am I.
You could end up, what you could do is in if it's if you could have the thousand foot applied to the industrial and you could have a lesser distance apply in the residential if you wanted. So you could go to maybe five hundred feet. Because a thousand is a pretty significant distance for residential.
Is that measurement to the building or just to the property line?
That is typically to the building.
So somebody across from the school could still potentially have a grow operation if they're five hundred feet from the school building?
Correct.
So I mean, I'm just looking at our high school. I know there's grow operation that's just kitty corner from there, or there's a lot of dead skunks.
Let me just be clear, but it states right here, the distance is measured from the property line of the school to the building containing the primary caregiver. So it's so it's that that makes it clearer.
Are we talking five hundred or a thousand in what you just?
Well, my suggestion is maybe to consider if it'd be a thousand if you're in the industrial district, but five hundred feet in in the residential district.
I think there has to be something.
I agree.
Doesn't it say that it has to be a thousand to comply with the federal drug-free school zone?
Think you said that's in the industrial.
It's most my understanding that a municipality can potentially modify that. That's another question that we will talk to the township attorney about.
Because if it's if it's applying to federal regulation, I mean, I know this whole thing is kind of understated that, but I mean, it's I don't think the thousand foot should differ whether it's no matter what district it's in.
If that's what you want, we'll keep it that way. If that's the consensus, just.
I would go along with that, too.
That's what I thought it was too. I agree with that.
Okay, so a thousand feet for everyone. That makes it easy. All right, and I think that answered all of my other questions. So what we would do then is basically take what you see here in this memo and with your input with what we've talked about tonight, craft an ordinance, bring it back to you. So I guess the question becomes, would you be comfortable in setting a public hearing and having that draft come before you, knowing that you can modify the draft at the public hearing? In order to try to move this through, since it's a very time-sensitive issue. So would you be interested in trying to go ahead and have that public hearing for your regular March meeting?
Which would be the fourth Wednesday?
Will be the March twenty-fourth.
March twenty-fourth.
Would we have the draft? A draft for the public hearing, so the planning.
Well, the draft has to be available fifteen days in advance. Yes, so you would you would have it.
I think that's doable. It should be doable.
And when we go to a public hearing with our comment or people's comments coming in, we can make changes at that particular point if we.
Yes, you can.
Because I think the public's probably gonna have some valid points to point out to us. So so we're not tied into a boat lease. If we do what you just said, we can get it scheduled on publicly noticed correctly for March twenty-fourth and see where it goes from there.
And you have the potential to move it as fast as possible to the township board. If all goes well with the public hearing and you feel comfortable with it, you could make a recommendation and get it to the board, and they would they would then have it in April.
And that would give the public plenty of time to look at what the potentials, what the draft is for the.
Sure, they're gonna have the statutory requirements with the notice, and it will be available for inspection, just like all any other zoning ordinance amendment.
So the commissioners feel that's appropriate?
I think so.
I do.
Yep.
I mean, all of a sudden, we're getting pushed on that as rapidly as we can, and we might as well accommodate that the speediest interval that we can satisfy.
So do you need a motion then from us, Rod?
I think it'd be good, yes, send a motion to hold a public hearing on this for your regular March meeting.
March twenty-fourth meeting. So if anybody would like to care to make a motion?
So I, Robert, will make a motion to set a public hearing for March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, based on the memorandum for for or on and with the changes for the proposed draft. As we discussed tonight.
Do I hear any second?
I'll second that. Yes, sir.
It was you, right?
It was.
Oh, I recognize your voice.
I recognize yours too.
Can I make a suggestion on that? Should we include that it's regarding the cannabis issue and caregivers? Primary caregivers?
Yes, that's I meant to do that, but.
Okay. So you'd like to amend your motion to include that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Deborah, you would still like to second it?
Yes, ma'am.
I sue, do you understand the motion? Yes, she's shaking her head yes. Or nodding her head yes, excuse me. Do the planning commission members any discussion? Do you understand the motion? If so, then I guess I would ask Wady to do a roll call, please.
Tom Gozel, excuse. Robert Muesling?
Yes.
Keith Fell?
Yes.
Chris Hultunen?
Yes.
Party Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Borchardt?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert?
Yes, thank you. Planner planners will get the notifications that we need out, and you will confer with our township attorney. So hopefully, we'll be all set and ready to go. All right, I'm gonna move on to item number seven, which is under unfinished business, which would be a vacation rental ordinance recommendation to the township board. One of the planners have anything to say or?
Yes, Mrs. Chair.
On page two.
Wait, hey, Wady, Wady, wait a second. We're gonna let Eric go first, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
I know. Go ahead, Eric.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so something to keep in mind with the ordinance you're looking at is this is not a zoning ordinance amendment. This is, this would be a general ordinance language, so it's a little different than what you typically see. It's a little more broad than what you would have in the zoning ordinance where those are specific to uses and locations. So that's just something to keep in mind as you think about this. So what we're talking about is creating a registration requirement for existing and proposed vacation rentals within single-family dwelling units. There'd be a prohibition on unregistered dwelling units being used as vacation rentals. And this language is modeled after Ira Township general ordinance language that you've previously seen. So section two of the ordinance is a general purpose and intense statement saying that this ordinance is based on the health, safety and welfare of the community, which are general terms that are used for regulating uses in in all communities. Section three provides definitions that are specific to this ordinance. It defines what a vacation rental is, what a bedroom is, and a local agent. So again, a vacation rental is a registered, single-family dwelling unit offered for paid lodging not to exceed thirty days. A definition of bedroom is provided. This prevents non-bedroom rooms from being counted as rentable space, so that helps create a limit on the number of occupants. And then the local agent would be the manager of a rental if it's not the owner. Section four are the general regulations, so the bulk of the standards. The registration term would be two years. Immediate renewal of the registration would be required with any change to property ownership, so that the township has the current information for the rental. Occupancy permit would be required as determined necessary by the building department, depending on if there's any existing improvements that need to be upgraded or proposed improvements for the rental. And then a registration form application would be needed, would be needed to create created by the building department. And those are the A through K items. So the owner, the local agent would fill out this application or form and submit it to the township as part of the registration process. So we would create that create that form later if if this process goes through. Existing vacation rentals are addressed. Those are required to complete registration within six months of this ordinance being adopted. The six month is just something that we suggested, so that could be changed to a year or a different time that you desired. The maximum occupants are also provided, and and we propose two per bedroom plus two per finished floor. And then the total maximum number of bedrooms that could be in a single-family dwelling unit used as a vacation rental would be four. So there's limitations on how many ultimate occupants you could have within one house. And then lastly, there's a sign posting requirement that would advise renters that there are local regulations that are in play here to try to help, you know, control any unruly behavior or things like that. And then lastly, section five addresses violations, and and these fine amounts are placeholders that would be set by the township board. Violations of this ordinance would be a municipal civil infraction. There this the registration could be revoked if there are three or more violations within a twelve-month period. There's a show cause hearing process within fourteen days of notice of this. And then if a registration is revoked, there's a one-year wait for re-registration. So there's a there's an additional penalty for that. So this is the first chance you've had to look at formal language for Clay Township. So looking for a discussion of this, and this would be a recommendation to the township board. You're not required to hold a public hearing at this point. If this is successful, this is kind of the policy decision stage. So if the township board does feel that they want to adopt language like this in the general ordinance, we would follow this up with zoning ordinance amendments that extract just the land use zoning related issues from this. And then we could look at additional standards that are location-based, districts-based, things like that. So that would be a second stage to this. So that's all I have on Madam Chair.
Thank you, Eric. Board members, any comments, questions?
On page two, the sub paragraph under K says, in addition to the above, the applicant shall be a registration fee. I think it should be shall pay a registration fee. I think.
Yes, that's a typo, not that.
I I I guess I've looked at it a dozen times, and two per bedroom seems to be nice. But in some cases, why two per finished floor in addition to that? Are they supposed to be sleeping on the couches in the living room, dining room, or whatever? And that does not provide additional restroom facilities or shower facilities as you go from six persons to about ten? Is that a good thing to have in a vacation home? I don't know.
It's pretty, it's pretty common to have that type of provision, because a lot of times when you're, if you're a family, the children will sleep on the couch in in the living room. Adults will be in the.
We don't restrict it to children. We we could have ten adults, right?
Yeah, it's one way of maintaining a reasonable limit.
Yeah, okay.
And the, uh, occupancy permit, uh, item three, uh, is that, that's gonna be an inspection by the building department?
Yeah, that would be per the normal, um, their normal procedures, and we would work, work with them to make sure that, that's satisfactory language.
And, and how often would that take place, do you think?
The way it's worded would just be at the registration point.
For a year or six months, whatever they decide, okay.
Would that also count like at the renewal too, Eric, if, once, when they go to renew for the registration?
Uh, I, I think we could require that, um, that would be a question of if they're just updating the registration, or if they have to do, do the full registration process again, so, um, I think.
I just think it makes sense to do an inspection periodically if they're doing registration, you know, just to make sure that it's still as it was in the original registration.
Yeah, I think the renewal goal is to have a new reg, a completely new registration, but I think we could strengthen that language to be clear that it's, if the ownership changes, it's a, a new registration process and, and inspection.
And also, you, you said this doesn't have to go for public hearing?
Right, so this is a general ordinance amendment, it's not a zoning ordinance amendment, so this is not something that you're, you would be adopting, um, or considering for the zoning ordinance. If we do a zoning ordinance amendment later, then there will be a public hearing.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be necessarily this full language, it would be limited, it would be less than this, just the zoning, the zoning portions of, of these, um, requirements.
When the, when the township board adopts general ordinances, there is not a requirement for a public hearing, that's a, that's a state statute, the way it's structured.
Okay, I, I guess my question would be, and even though it's not a requirement, because it's such a hot topic, uh, would it make sense to have a public hearing, just that the public could be heard?
N- not at the planning commission level, because this isn't your ordinance, you're, you're not, it's really, if the township board wanted to do it, that would be great, but it's, this is not your ordinance, so I would say not at the planning commission level.
Uh, getting to, uh, some life safety issues, uh, should, uh, each of your rental be required to have, uh, you know, extinguishers, uh, maybe an exit sign, or, uh?
Yeah, that's in four F.
I know in the past, we've had numerous people, like in Inglewood, come before, I think, but front of the township board of trustees, plus the planning commission, about some very difficulty, great difficulties happening on their streets of over-parking, um, just too many people, maybe outhouses, or not outhouses, um, porta-johns being erected because there's just too many people. Do you feel at this point, looking at this draft discussion, that those items are covered as in a basic format right now, because I know not having a public hearing, I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of people going, what are we doing here?
Yeah, parking, we would likely have in the zoning ordinance amendment.
Can you go closer to the mic somehow?
So, if, if you wanted to have a parking requirement, we could put that either in this ordinance or the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance, uh, may be better, because that's typically what we look at for parking.
Well, I see under, I, I don't mean to interrupt, Eric, but I see number eleven, it says, "All parking shall be accommodated on site within a garage or on a paved driveway." So.
There's a plot plan that has to be submitted, so they have to prove that they can park the number of vehicles that are required.
Vehicles with boat trailers, because I know that was one of the hot things that people were complaining about, that people showing up with their boats and trailers, and there's just no room to park, and, and I think that was one of the things too, the, some of the residents were saying that it's a private drive. Does this cover private drives as far as, like, a street that has ten houses and it's a private road for those ten houses?
So that, that's a standard for the bed and breakfast lodgings that, um, you can't be located on a private drive, this would be completely separate of that, so there'd be no restriction that, um, or requirement that it would have to have furniture on public right-of-way, it would have to be a, a, from a zoning standpoint, a, a legal house.
Okay.
But we didn't include anything, uh, as far as that, as far as frontage or what type of road, the rentals on, and sorry, just one other point on the porta-johns, we'll, we will cross-reference this with the, um, the township as an ordinance on, um, portable toilets or porta-john, so we, we will need to check that to make sure there's no conflict, so if we need to reference that, just to make it clear that you can't have, uh, a porta-john, but with, with the occupancy requirement, um, I think we could hold up a registration if a house couldn't meet basic occupancy, um, you know, requirements for bathrooms.
Just trying to cover some of the comments we've received over the last year or so with residents and their concerns. So, um, go ahead.
I think one of the, one of the other concerns was, you know, several popping up on the same street, where people have bought homes, now all of a sudden, they're surrounded by vacation rentals, and can't enjoy their own property that they've lived at for twenty years, because it's become pretty central, Monday through Saturday, or Saturday through Saturday, whatever the case may be, and I, I know that's a huge concern for people, and I don't know there's something we can do to limit the amount that are going to be permitted per street to help these people, I, I, I don't know, I don't, I, I'm trying to help them, because I understand where they're coming from. I know, as a homeowner, I've got one down my street, I'm, when I bought my house, it wasn't here, but it is now, and I know what I've had to do with this, and I can't imagine having another two or three on the same road. I mean, it becomes, it's not, it doesn't become a residential area anymore, it becomes a rental area, pretty much, where you don't know who's gonna be there day to day.
I'm gonna echo Christine's concerns, because that's happened to us also in the neighborhood we're in, so, again, it's not just us, but people have come to us over the last year or so about those concerns, and looking at this draft discussion, trying to figure out, does that cover any of that, or are we just not addressing it at this point?
Oh, the question would be if you wanted to address that with the general ordinance or with the zoning ordinance, if, if there was gonna be a more involved study where um, we're creating maps and trying to analyze, um, what the appropriate maximum number per block or per, um, length of street would be, that process is typically better to do with the planning commission as part of the zoning side of it. But yeah, that, that is something that's not in this, this is more the registration process, um, starting point for this use, it's not, we don't view it as being the total package of what, um, how you may wanna regulate these.
Okay, but if we, I'm sorry, can I just, can I just finish this one? I'm sorry, let me just finish this one thought real quick. If that's, if that's, if that's the case, say this goes to the board and they approve it, and, um, we do say, like Christine had, we get five, six houses on a block, potentially. Would that fall into a grandfathering episode then, when it comes back to the public, or to the planning commission, and we're gonna be more density-wise? Do you, am I sure if I'm clear on my question?
Because it's a, you know, that, that may be a question for the township attorney, because potentially, we may be able to address that through the licensing provision as well, and, uh, because the, the general ordinances aren't subject to grandfathering restrictions, only zoning ordinances are, so we may be able to deal with that, we'll, we may have to do some research.
Is, is there gonna be a limit as to the number of permits that will be issued? Or is it just gonna basically be first come, first served?
This does not include any limits.
That would depend on if you want to limit it township-wide or, or area-based, but also the purpose of this too is, before we kinda get really involved into, into looking at this, does the township board even wanna regulate this use? So that's kind of why we're starting at this point, is it's the policy question of, does the township wanna regulate vacation rentals at all? Um, if, if they don't, then there's no sense in going through the zoning, um, location-based, all these detailed, um, you know, investigate investigative, um, things to try to craft standards, if, if you do get the okay to proceed, then it, it's, it, you know, we can do that, but that's kind of where we're starting, why we're starting with the general ordinance, um, approach is to try to get, um, you know, a resolution on the, the big question.
So you're trying to find out from the township board with this particular draft language, if what the township board's position is, as far as Clay Township's concerned, for rentals?
Yes, and this wouldn't be, they could, they could change the language however they would want, um, the, they would be working with the township attorney. Um, they may want different language, but, um, it would be good to have, to know that, you know, that, the, the policy choice before we get too involved with, um, studies or, or zoning ordinance amendments and things like that.
I'm led to believe that the, uh, zoning ordinance can be enforced better than a, uh, general ordinance. Well, something is the board, the board can look at and we'll bring it forward.
I interrupted last time, so who else would like to have a say here?
May I say something?
Absolutely.
Um, I have a question, uh, Eric. Um, what, number seven, what's the thought behind a single-family dwelling containing a vacation rental still not exceed four bedrooms? So there's, uh, the reason I'm asking that, um, I've rented a lot of vacation places around the country, and, for example, um, who all wants to go, family members, so we'll gather up ten, fifteen people, how many bedrooms do we need? We'll need six, so we look for a house with six bedrooms. So we can all throw in together and, you know, go to the beach or wherever we're going. So what, what's your thought behind limiting it to four bedrooms?
Uh, that number certainly can change if, if you think more is appropriate, but it's just in, trying to keep in, in that single-family character where most houses are three or four bedrooms, if you have a house that's six to eight bedrooms, and you're allowing that to be a vacation rental, then is that more of a motel, hotel situation? Um, would you want, you know, to allow a, a six or eight-bedroom house to be fully rentable? So it's just trying to constrain, um, constrain the rental to have, to keep that single-family character, but it's, it can certainly change.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah, Rod, on the four F, it doesn't really cite, uh, exit signs and extinguishers.
You're, you're right, it doesn't have an exit sign, we can, we can add that, um, it mentions.
I'll look at more, at least an extinguisher.
Yeah, it has smoke alarm, um, and carbon monoxide detector, um, so you'd like to see extinguisher and exit sign added?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it's the business.
Chris Hultunen, do you have any questions, comments?
Eric kinda answered it, I, I guess I was just wondering why we couldn't have a total package with the, uh, general ordinance and the zoning changes presented, just because there's a lot of unknowns or, or questions, you know, and I guess mainly just for the of some of the other things that the, uh, residents were talking about. You know, I, I get, it, we have to get this in place, and then we can go to phase two?
Correct, Eric?
What it sounds like to me.
That's, that's our, this is the simple, this is a simpler starting point, um. If we wanna look at limiting on a block basis, um, we would, that would take some further analysis, but it would be best to wait to, to get the go-ahead to do that.
Yeah, this way you get the temperature of the township board, in terms of what they wanna do with this, and then you'll be able to move forward, so.
I kinda thought the township board wanted us to address this, but maybe I have my, um, conversation turned around here, so. Um, unless Mark can clarify, if this is what the township board's looking for us to do, that's great, we'll see what we can get accomplished. How about Robert Musling, any comments, questions?
No, I, like, I had a quite the same question as Deborah about the bedrooms, but, I mean, besides that, you know, I, I don't, like, Mark with four F, I think extinguishers need to be there, uh, in marked some way, I don't know if I'm concerned about exits, but, I mean, definitely extinguishers. So. But no, that's, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward, if, if we're not, if we're not doing anything as far as, you know, if this is just to get everything situated for the board to say yes, this, keep going on this, I, I think it does that.
Well, um, you know, I, we've had, as Kathy said, uh, we've had numerous complaints about, rentals or renters being in, in those homes and going outside of just a place to stay, sleep, and eat. I mean, there, uh, apparently one, one rental is, uh, uh, they have a business going on with the rental of, uh, jet skis and so on and so forth, uh, a lot of other, uh, fireworks and/or bonfires. Uh, so I don't know if there's something in here that, uh, can limit that.
Well, the, the fireworks is limited to, to just what's allowed by state law, there's certain days that the state has identified as the minimum. So you would be able to do fireworks on those days, but not any other days, so that's covered under number nine.
Wha- what if we had a posting inside of each resident, and all the residents signed that, or the, the renters, such, such as you would see in the back of a, uh, condo that you rent down in Florida, you know?
Well, that would be, the rental agent should do that.
Right, right, and ma- make sure that, you know, the, the renter sign off on it.
I think the big problem has always been, I'm sorry, I think a big problem has always been the enforcement issue on it, who do these people turn to? When they have these issues?
So that, that, that's kind of the big goal with the registration process, is it, it, it puts that on the record with the township, so they would have this form. Um, if they get a complaint on a Monday after a weekend, they have a direct, a direct contact to either the local agent or the owner. Um, and they can, they can, you know, fight them under the violations, and, and then they're on the clock for one of the, one of the three that they get in twelve months.
But really, they can't contact anybody until Monday, and only Monday through Thursday.
That's not necessarily true.
Township's closed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Rental agent, you call the rental agent, when I just got back from Florida, we rented a place there, and you saw, I, this contract I signed was like six pages long, and if anyone has a complaint, they can call, there was a rental sign right out stuck on the lawn, you can call the right rental agent twenty-four-seven, there's also a sign on the refrigerator that says, "Welcome to our guests." The very first thing it says, "If local authorities are called due to a noise violation, you are responsible for any fines and/or citations issued, which can result in a fine up to five hundred dollars." If our township board wants to adopt that, then it's a police situation, because it becomes an ordinance, so.
So, does that mean?
They call the police, and they can get a citation, because they know it's a rental place, because it's been registered.
I think the question, though, becomes, like Christine said, so you just got your weekend ruined, is there a way that, say the complaint comes in on a Friday, or a Saturday, or a Sunday, when the township board, or township offices aren't open, they call the police, are the police gonna have the availability to know if there's not a sign in the yard saying, "Contact this person"? I guess, does there have to be something in this vacation rental ordinance that those people don't need to suffer for the weekend, because we have no availability for the township offices other than the police? Is there a way that the police can have the information to contact whoever the rental agent is? That type thing, which might help.
It sure would.
Well, you, you could require the posting of the name and phone number of the agent.
That's what was done in Florida, there's a sign right up front.
Whether there's a sign out front, I don't, I'm not sure I care how it's done, but if it's on the refrigerator in the house, I don't think.
No, I'm sorry, my, this would have to be an exterior sign.
It has to be an exterior sign, and I think that somehow should be put in here, because.
And somehow the contract should point out that if you can't get ahold of that agent, you immediately call the police, instead of waiting until you've left already the next Monday. I mean, that, that, to me, that's, uh, that has to be a timely response, if you can't get ahold of the agent, I, uh, I don't remember where I saw this here, but it said, "Contact the owner or agent." Well, if you can't get ahold of him, you better get to the police immediately and get somebody to respond to the complaint that has been, or is being filed.
Well, that, that could, that could be another stipulation, uh, in the registration, that they're available twenty, that the agent or a, or an agent of that agent is available twenty-four-seven.
Well, as, uh, Deborah said, she had to sign a six-page contract, and we don't have any control over. and we don't have any control over the contract and what's going in there at this time. Maybe we have to go into that later on. All these things ought to be signed by the renter and they are then, as she said, it's a $500 fine and you're liable.
So in the draft that's going to the township board, is that an item somehow we can, I don't know, gently put in?
I mean, that's, you're asking for an additional form that every renter signs each time they rent that the township's involved in?
Right, the township should develop that, Eric. I believe. You're right.
I think that would, I think that would be difficult to track with, if you have a new renter every weekend to provide, for them to provide the township for every renter.
Well, actually, what I was saying was reverse. I was saying would, that, that the police department and the township board have at their disposal, especially in the weekend, the police department.
Right.
When the township board or the township offices are not open, who the contact person is for that whole rental agency.
I think, yeah, I think providing the registration information.
Thank you.
Is definitely a good, a good suggestion if there's.
I didn't. It's on for, it's on 4B already. It says name, address of the phone number of a local agent. And what you're saying is how would the police know? They don't need to know. They just need to know that there's noise and it's a rental unit. If, if the neighbors call, they'll say, well, the guy next door has got this rental unit and he's got 85 people over there and, you know.
We could, we could create a link between if the police are called, they, they know it's a registered rental and then that the building department knows that the police went out there. So that.
That's, yeah, that's.
I'm sorry, say that again, Mark. I couldn't hear you.
We can make that happen. That, that link, absolutely.
Now, I guess I had a question again about, I know I asked this and I, I don't know if my question was misunderstood. We had several people that said that they lived on private roads and they had vacation rentals on their private and they have an association on that road. Would our rules follow, would they have to follow the township's rules? Or do they follow their association rules for that private road as far as vacation rental?
Both.
Okay.
So the, if they're not following association rules, the association could sue them or take action against them for not adhering to association rules. Township rules are separate. But both apply.
That's a, that's a bed and breakfast lodging standard that's existing that was mentioned that this wouldn't be under this, these wouldn't be bed and breakfasts, should be vacation rentals. So if we wanted to look at that separately, that we could do that, but that's what, that's how I, that was cited. It's a, it's a BMB standard you have.
Yeah, I think you, with the condo, you already have the, they're going to have their own regulations already. So I think you're, I think you're covered there.
Other board comments, questions, anyone? Hearing nothing, I guess I'll ask Eric or Rod. From us, do you need a motion to send it to as a recommendation to the township board? Is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
With the couple additions that like Marcus pointed out, fire extinguisher, exit sign, whatever.
Yes, we're going to cross-reference the Porta John section. We're going to refer that there's going to be an inspection whenever the owner changes.
Isn't that in there?
I don't know. Does it say inspection or new license?
It, it just says renewal, we're going to.
It says renewal. We're going to make it clear there'll be an inspection when the ownership changes. And I have an extinguisher and exit signs as, as required by the building department. And then there would be a exterior sign of posting that would indicate the name of the agent and the phone number that would be visible from, from the exterior where people would have that contact information. I think those are the notes I had. Do you have anything else there?
Just that will provide either on the form or in the ordinance to, to link that police building department that the police get a copy of the registration and that, that there's that, that link created there. So we'll work on language.
Perfect.
I have a question. Well, sorry. Will, will the vacation rental owners be required to provide the township with a copy of their rental agreements? Their standard rental agreements? As a file thing for each permit issued by the township?
Why would that be necessary?
I think that's typically required.
Well, you're talking about what they're going to be required to have.
If you, if you're doing like Airbnb, I'm not sure what that agreement usually looks like. It's usually online. I'm trying to remember.
I think it'd be very challenging to try to do that.
It's not as involved as like a week long timeshare type, type arrangement where you might have that.
Um, I, I almost would like to see a certificate of occupancy. If, if they're going to be doing short-term rentals or vacation rentals, I would almost say every renewal cycle that they're getting the certi, updated certificate of occupancy. Even if there's an excess fee that has to go along with that. I mean, that's, that's something that I, I mean, if the stuff's not kept up to date, handrails could be ripped off. I mean, Gary, I'm sure has seen. I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of like if a lot of the townships and stuff where they've went to where a home's vacated for X amount of days where it's not occupied and somebody purchases that home or whatever, and now they have to get a new CVO for the home.
Now, that's covered under number three. You have to have a certificate of occupancy when you first register and then we're going to clarify that when the ownership changes, you'll have an inspection and a new certificate.
I'm not, I'm not saying when ownership changes. I'm saying every two years in the renewal process.
Okay.
Because that's.
Do that every two years. Okay.
Because that's, I mean, it can stay under the same ownership for 20 or 30 years. And if they're running it out, I mean, the, heck, those, the changes, you could have handrails ripped off every weekend, let alone every two years even. I mean, that's, that's something I think that definitely would, should be dealt with.
Yeah, the, the change of ownership language is to try to catch these if it's under that two years. So say in six months it changes ownership, then
Yeah.
Come through this again. So we tried to, we'll strengthen that, that every two years you have to go through that full registration form verification.
Okay, so Rod and Erica, you set with what we, as a planning commission are requesting in this document?
And I say that I moved to submit the vacation rental ordinance draft to the board with the changes and additions as discussed at our meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Keith though.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay.
Sue Parcell, do you understand the motion? Okay, got an ad, yes. Any questions, discussion from the planning commission members themselves? Everybody understand the motion? Not hearing a negative. I'm going to ask Whitey to do a roll call, please.
Robert Musling?
Yes.
Keith Fell?
Yes.
Chris Hiltonan?
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Deborah Addy?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Mark Borshardt?
Yes.
Kathy Schlecker?
Yes, thank you, Whitey. All right, I'm going to move on to item number eight, which would be planning consultant's report says medical marijuana.
I don't think there was anything about that other than what we've already covered. Eric, did you have anything else?
Here.
No, I did. That might just be an old, an old, a different version of the agenda you're looking at, but no.
And like, okay.
Yeah, we, no, we, yeah, we, I, I don't think we have anything additional to add this month.
Sure. And as far as Chris Hiltonan brought up fences, Gary and Rod.
Oh yeah, that, that's in the process. That's, there will be a public hearing at your March 10th meetings, if correct date, I believe.
Yes.
There'll be a public hearing and you will be getting a, the, the draft language. It'll be available 15 days in advance, just like any other. That will be distributed to you. And just like any other ordinance, obviously, you'll be able to potentially make modifications at the, at the meeting if you find it to be appropriate. But we're making good progress on, on the draft and that will be available in time for the public notice.
So right now?
These were, we are past 15 days, aren't we?
We have the, the ordinance has been drafted, but we're still tweaking it with Gary's. So you'll get the version to consider with your packets next week.
Well, we're not, we're, we're not less than 15 days from the date of the hearing. No.
Right.
Did you say that the hearing was March 10th?
Yes.
Oh, so Rod, while we're on fencing, you did a review of Gary's.
Yeah, tech, yeah. Yeah, there's a draft that we'll get, let me just finish up with that. There'll be a draft available. We'll get that out to you hopefully tomorrow.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Did, when you say get it out twice, you mean the whole planning commission out?
We'll email the entire planning commission.
For the fences?
For the fences.
Okay. Does that clarify for you, Chris?
I guess I was just counting 15 days and that was a couple of days.
The draft's available. We were just clarifying one thing before we sent it out to you. It's done. We just want to make sure of it. We're all, it's ready. But yeah, we'll get it to you tomorrow.
So as far as the correct notice and the timing, that's already accomplished. You're just tweaking a few.
Yeah, the draft is, yeah, right. It's, it's complete. We'll, we'll get it to you tomorrow.
I'll say that I have a couple of small changes that I hope that they'll incorporate, but we're real close. We're real close right now.
Okay, so for March 10th, this is supposed to be a go ahead on the fences, correct? For a public hearing. Do we have any other public hearings on the 10th or just that particular one?
Just that.
That's the only one with a public hearing.
Okay. Anything else from the planners? Nope. Okay. I'm going to move on to item number nine, which is ZBA representatives report. Which would be, Eddie?
That's me. The February 17th meeting was canceled.
Okay.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Item number 10 is board representatives report, which is Mark.
I have nothing concerning the planning commission from the board right now.
Okay, thank you. Item number 11 is chairperson's report. The only couple items I have is I, there are some planning and zoning online training workshops that the township I believe would pay for. If anybody's interested, contact Cindy Babish is usually how we go about that. So I would encourage anybody who wants to participate, please do so. The other thing that occurred is I believe in Erica and Rod can help me out on this. We had a pre-site committee and Gary was involved also on February 4th regarding the Patty and Harold Bain property at 3062 South Channel and we don't have very many of these, but this is one of them we did and it passed the pre-site reuse, reoccupancy standards. So we have a written document issue with that. And I also heard yesterday and Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, that you had the fire department inspection and your inspection and everything seems to be proceeding correctly?
Yep, it's, it's proceeding. We've actually, you know, they've got a final, have to get a final approval from the health department and they couldn't get that final approval until they got all the signatures from the inspectors. So we, once they get that approval, they're going to be okay for a 30 day temporary certificate to occupy. They've got a couple of things that they need to do. We need some emergency lighting and signage there. But yeah, it's progressing and, and they should be open any day as soon as they get their final approval from health department.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The only other thing that came in today, I got an email from Cindy Babish. I believe it went to Gary and our planners from a Kim, no, I'm not, that's not the right one, for a reuse on a automotive type industry. Is that what it was?
Are you asking me?
Either one. I pretty, I just saw it right before I started the meeting from Cindy.
Yeah, there, there's a business on Nook Road that it's an auto repair business. And back in, I believe it was 2006, there was a, an approval done by the commission at that time to allow for basically an online car dealership at that establishment. So we're, we're going down that same path. We're still waiting for some additional information from the business. But what they're asking for is to be able to have an online auto sales business. Ran out of there. Basically, everything's online, nothing's on site. But we have to get a site plan from them and actually the verbiage from them telling us exactly what they're going to be doing.
But they're asking for a pre-site, right?
Dealership license from the state of Michigan?
Yes. And, and it's going to be a condition of what we find in order, you know, we got to send back to the state. But depending upon what they're going to do there, we'll regulate or, or just make the decision that we have to make on whether or not it's allowed at that location. Because there's a consideration for parking or areas where they can put cars and they don't have that there. And that's not what they're asking for. So we have to clarify that, make sure that it's just going to be an online, no vehicle or customers coming to that establishment, so.
Sounds like a winner.
Right.
So, but Gary, if I understand correctly and Rod, the email from Cindy was regarding, they were requesting a pre-site meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we, it was just to set up that first pre-occupation meeting. So we don't have any background info yet or anything like.
We really don't have a lot of information.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify, that's where we're at. So we'll get together with that. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you, everybody, for working diligently on the last two items we just discussed. As far as the caregivers and the rental ordinance. Number 12 is planning commission members comments. Any comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
I, I see that we are now required to download the packet information and print it ourselves, which may or may not be difficult. But the real question is, when we get a site plan, is that going to be on eight and a half by 11?
I think we.
You emailed Cindy and I asked her that question and she said she would be getting back to us.
She'll be getting back with us?
That was the response I got.
Thank you. I don't think we can look at a site plan on an eight and a half by 11 sheet.
I talked to Cindy yesterday about it too, and she said that they're looking to see what their software can do so that it can be manipulated or grown up or she did say she was looking into that situation.
Yeah, but most of us don't have a printer that can take any more than maybe eight and a half by 14.
You need a CAD CAM printer.
Thank you. That needs almost a flatbed printer to get those drawings out that we have been getting. And isn't it a requirement that some of the builders and the applicants supply drawings, size D drawing? And I don't think you can reduce a size three drawing to a eight and a half by 11 and make it readable. I mean, that's, I just don't know how they're going to deal with it.
Well, I guess my question on that too would be is if they're requiring us, us to print them, I mean, who's covering that expense?
Well, this is just another attempt by every business to pawn off operational expenses on the customer or user.
Let me, one comment. If, if they give you those plans at a high enough resolution and they're uploaded, you should be able to zoom in and see all the detail that you need on your computer. The question is, are they high enough resolution to do that?
That, right.
Well, the other question is what happens when we're in the middle of a meeting?
Are we going to have connections when we are back in the township for all our computers to be hooked up in the back of our seats?
You need an iPad and a laptop. You get, set them both together and then.
Does the township provide that?
Communities are moving towards giving the planning commissioners iPads to do that, believe it or not. That's becoming.
I was going to say, I would, that would be one of my questions is the township, if this is the direction they like to go, that's fine. But are they can provide the equipment to make it happen when we actually go live back into a township board meeting? Or planning commission meeting? I mean, right now I think we're all using our own personal equipment, which it's the life we live right now. So.
Well, it, it's just a, a, a question that I have to see that we can continue at least to have a look at some of the information that's passed on to us. And if we can't get a good look at it, uh, uh, it'd be detrimental to what we have to do.
Stay tuned. We'll see if we can get some more.
I shall.
And we'll see what we can get clarified and maybe Chris will get it clarified quicker than the rest of us as well. So we'll see what happens. Any other board comments? All right. If not, we're going to go title number thirteen, which is public comments. And before we start the public comments, I would just like everybody to remember, um, the rules for public comments here. Well, they would be printed on our agenda and they're still there. So if we could just adhere to those rules, even though we're doing a Zoom platform. So Christine Holcomb, would you like to give it a try?
I will do my best. Uh, first person that I have is Alpha LM. If you'd like to speak. Going once. Alpha LM. Okay. Carol Sampson.
She's still muted.
She's muted herself. I've asked her to unmute or ask the person to unmute. I'll ask one more time. Alpha LM. Carol Sampson.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Dave Mason. Dave Mason. Last time, Dave Mason. Um, iPad Ari. iPad Ari. iPad Ari. Okay. J map or J I map?
Hi there. Uh, no comment today. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee?
Nothing for Kelly.
Thank you. Kevin McDougall.
Kevin McDougall. Yep.
Hi.
I just wanted to first, I'd often thank everybody that brought up the comments, uh, for the draft. Um, a couple of things that I did want to go, especially with Kathy. Kathy was stating that, um, the same thing that we were concerned about was, um, that the board wanted the planning commission to draft this, not go to them. I got an email from Artie that said, thanks for the email and sorry that you have to put up with all these items. I asked the planning commission to deal with this about six months ago and they were coming up with something to say. Hopefully they're coming up with something to satisfy your issues. So I'm hoping we're not going to go back and forth. You know, and I, um, it, it just seems like, um, I, it'd be better if we had the zoning related issues like the private road. How can we have double standards on a, uh, a bed and breakfast is not allowed on a, uh, private road, but it is going to be allowed on a vacation. I, I didn't get that. And Rod and, uh, Chris stated, both of them, uh, about, um, businesses on a residential street. That's a business and nobody wants it if it's a growing house, but this is a business that nobody's living there. It's a rental home. It's a business, um, in a residential. It, it's really hard to make double standards on everything. And if you're not even writing it in the draft, it makes it even tougher. On, on, on that part of it, I just don't get how, um, maybe we're going to have to go and wait for the zoning on it, but I think we need to stick with an R one residential. That's how I bought my place. And now it's allowing businesses in there. And i- it's a major concern. And if anybody deals with it, then they know what we're talking about. But you know what? If it's on a regular road and not a private road, sure, have the vacations. Long as it's not as congested as that we have in our sub. Um, and as far as, I'm going to go real quickly because I know, I mean, you guys have been awesome. Two of the hottest topics probably, that's intense. And I know you're going to have a lot of people talking, but, um, the thing says that the health, safety and welfare for the community, when you have fifteen, twenty people at the room that you don't even know any of these people, how are, how are you looking for our safety? So it's written in there that you're looking out for us, but if, if the Airbnb or whoever the rental property has twenty people there, how do we prove that? Do I take pictures? Are they saying they're visiting? Who is going to, what is my avenue to say, no, they're not following the rules? And then they say, oh no, they were just visiting or something. If you're going to have some costs associated to this, I think you need to put money aside and actually hire somebody full time. If you're going to get into the rental business that is going to be able to justify, you can take pictures and you will have, they'll have some repercussion. This will be in a real, um, conflict coming up. It is, this is not going to be a pretty thing down the road. The neighbors are going to be trying to call the police every single time now because that's going to be in the, in the draft. I think that's something that really has to be looked at on a private road in a residential area. Your guys are going to move on to this and it's going to be a problem. The, uh, the maximum number not to exceed. So it looks like twelve on a four bedroom. If, if I'm correct, so how do you prove that only twelve people came? That's, that's going to be hard to, uh, to.
No way to police any of that stuff. Best way is just not have it.
It's, it's just something that we, we're not going to have any jurisdiction on this. And, and with you guys being closed on the weekends, like you said before, unless you have a twenty-four hour, seven days a week, this isn't just a weekend, um, thing. This is people renting all week long. So there is no, um, vacation time just on weekends. We're dealing with this every single day. Um, you can look at some of the maps and there, there's rentals every single day on a lot of these. So it, you guys sometimes deal with it in the summer. I'm dealing with it now that they're even running it out to construction workers. So if they're dealing with construction workers, um, in renting on a lot of these leases, it says, uh, leases allowed over, uh, twenty-eight days or more are allowed. So how am I going to police it or how do I prove that? There's no way to do that. So if you're doing your, your, your so-called, uh, associate or the fees for this, you better make them a thousand dollars so you can actually hire somebody. You know, like the Blake guy, that guy works his tail off for, you know, um, part-time and there's only one person. So if you're going to start getting into the, the, um, mer- uh, marijuana and these vacations, I think as a township, you have to make sure you have the infrastructure to back it up. It's just a lot of stuff that's on here, um, that's got to be enforced, just like the, the parking. The parking is stating that, um, you can have four vehicles. So are you including a trailer as and a car as two? Um, I've seen six cars and trailers in some of these areas that totally sticking out into the road and everything. So how do you justify that? How do we make claims against that? We have nobody to enforce it. They're gone before you guys come back. So there's a lot of issues, but I, I just hate this going to be rewritten or to go to the board that you want to push it on when I don't think all the issues have, have actually been drafted properly before you send it on. I mean, technically I think you should have had a hearing with everybody before you voted to, to move it on and Artie saying that he, he doesn't want to deal with it. He wants you guys to. So I, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're actually being looked at. You guys deal with it all the time too, and you're starting to get a taste of it, but we haven't even hit it full force. You don't even have a restriction on a private road or any road of how many Airbnbs are allowed on there.
Kevin, I'm, Kevin, I'm going to interrupt you just because your three minutes are definitely up. Um, and a lot of what you said, we've heard before, which is why we were mentioning it again to, today. I probably should have asked now that this has been motioned on to the board of trustees when it would be scheduled for their agenda, but I did not. That's my fault. I will, we'll see if we can figure out when that's going to be. And I would encourage anybody on either side of this topic to, um, zoom in if there is zooming for the township board meeting. So you can state your concerns during their, um, public comments. How's that? Okay. But thank you for your input. I really appreciate it. Christine.
Tom Holbert.
Hello, my name's Tom Holbert. Um, I've never been on one of these meetings. I don't know what's appropriate to bring up when. I was just, I was actually kind of surprised that the township was even interested in regulating something like this. Um, I vacation all over the United States and Canada and rent houses and condos. I don't know, four or five times a year and I talk, get friends with a lot of the owners and, uh, um, I've never really heard anyone ever say that they have local township, county or city regulations over this. So I was kind of surprised that our township was even interested in getting involved in this. Um, uh, one little detail on the proposal of the ordinance, it said, um, landlords or agents need to provide paved parking for the renters. I assume that really just meant like a surfaced parking area, just actually trying to keep people off of parking in the front yard or the backyard or parking on the side of the road. Um, I live, uh, right on, was it M twenty-nine or twenty-six, right on Point, Point Tremble and you'd have to go at least thirty or forty houses down before someone had a concrete or paved, paved driveway. Everyone has a stone or gravel driveway. So I didn't know if you guys really just, and the proposal meant a surface to place the park just to keep them out of the grass or if you really expect then everyone to pony up forty grand and pave their driveways.
Well, thank you very much for your comments, Tom. We appreciate it. And I'm sure the board will, um, take that into consideration also when they get the proposed draft. Okay. Chris?
Tom Sutowski.
Hey, how you doing? Hello.
Hello. Go ahead. I think, did he mute himself again?
I think so.
How's that?
There you go. Hello.
Tom Purcell, seven eight two Lake Drive. I got a whole list of, uh, other people here that probably are on it. Uh, but anyway, it's ongoing again. And, uh, this looks like you're going to have this draft and just, uh, slide it through without, uh, public, uh, input on it. Is this to go through and not be under special land use? Am I, am I to understand that as being correct?
At this point, it's going back to the township board and it's in their hands. This is the draft that we've gotten and.
Uh huh. And what would that do?
Um, I guess you're going to have to go, I would suggest anybody who's interested either side of this topic, go tune into the next township board meeting. Um, which Mark, um, when's the next meeting coming up? Well, actually I wouldn't know if it's even on the next meeting. I should take that back. I apologize. We're going to have to check the agenda. I'm sorry, Mark. So. Um, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay. Well, um, I don't know. I guess we're just, uh, looks like we're going to get this, uh, shoved down our throat. It looks like, you know, I've been here for forty-two years. I really want to use my backyard and, uh, you know, your job is to provide a stable and sound environment for us. Our property values are supposed to maintain them. You've got to figure there's so many beds in this area. By renting it out or having a rental in it or somebody living in it, it doesn't change it. There's still the same number. So by having, uh, rentals there, the only ones making money is the guy renting it. And the ones that are losing money are the ones that all live around it because our property value is down. If you were, if any of you on the board were going to go look and buy a piece of property now that you've dealt with this and you've got a little firsthand information, wouldn't you check the area first and see what are the rentals are around you before you even bought? I mean, that, that is, that's going to be a given now and that brings the property value down. So they're looking at mine, sending out a nice picture, showing everybody how nice it is. And I'm over here and I don't even want to go in my damn backyard. That's forty-two years. It's just ridiculous. Uh, in two thousand nine, Michigan Supreme Court ruled that short-term rentals for dwelling for fee is not considered use of property as a single family dwelling. And, uh, more recently, uh, September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, uh, the court upheld short-term rentals violated the residential use and non-commercial use deeds restriction and restriction division and issued a junction banning short-term rentals. Uh, also there was another court that held, uh, held, upheld that transit short-term rentals uses violates the restrictive covenant requiring private occupancy only and private dwelling, which is a person's own property. When you leave it, you're expected to come back down there. That's yours, single family only. It's not, uh, it's not, uh, you know, sit around singing kumbaya and play cornhole all day. It's, uh, there's only so many beds in town here. And by allowing these things there, you're not increasing that it, if, if the property owner living there, he's going to go to the store. He's going to go buy gas. He's going to go to the drugstore. He's going to go to the restaurants. If there's a guy renting there, you know, they're going to maybe go out and buy bait and beer and try to, uh, come back with some pallets or something. There was a whole pile of pallets there sitting around there saying kumbaya last time. And, uh, it's really not generating nothing other than the people that own the property and they're ruining all the adjacent properties and they're the ones that are paying the taxes. You know, in a few of these things on there. So I don't even know how this thing got so far along like it did. I mean, this should have been considered like a, a bed and breakfast. I mean, they're still close together. The reason the old planning commission put that in there was probably some kind of reason. They, they want to protect the private property. Private means private. I mean, it's, it's, uh, when we had to have our road fixed, we got to maintain our road. Uh, the road is a lot number. We got three lot numbers for our roads. The township recognizes it. They don't, uh, tax it, but they recognize it. We got to maintain our own roads and I, my road is eleven feet wide. And I, I wanted to send you some pictures there. There's like a dirt trail, two-track. Looks like you're up in it, going to cabin up north, going down a road, snow covered, just two little lines down it. And to try to, uh, you know, put this in this area is not right. When it says private, it means private. How many other private roads are in the area? I mean, isn't Joe Char one and R three? I mean, there's not very not many private roads in this township, I would think. I don't know about the city of Algonoc, if that included or not, but out here, you know, they got nice roads. So we got to maintain roads and now they're, you know, abusing it and then we're going to have to pay for it. So it's, you know, it's just not right. Just not right. And for them, and for this to try to go through underneath the door without some kind of a pu- public comment or some kind of input, that, that is, that is ridiculous. When we, when we worked on our road, we had to, uh, get, uh, fifty-one percent for majority. And then the township, uh, put up a, uh, a, a petition or not a petition, but a paperwork. And we got a maintenance fee for our road and all we needed was fifty-one percent. That way everybody went along. I mean, right now this is a residential area. If they want to do, uh, Airbnbs, then let them get a petition. And if they get fifty-one percent, then we'll go along with it. But, uh, you know, uh, is, does anybody else complain about this or is it just our area? You mean, there's like, does Colony complain or Harson's Island? Does anybody else complain or is it just us?
Um, we've had different ones, but not a lot.
Mostly this area.
Yeah.
And I think that should tell you there's a reason for it. It's, it's too, too small. I mean, our lots are forty feet wide and the road's eleven feet.
And Tom, your three minutes are up and we do appreciate you being here. Um, again, I'm going to encourage you to attend the township board meeting when this item is on their agenda. And we are very aware of your concerns that you've expressed to us. So, um, we'll see where we go from here. Okay?
Alright. Yep.
Thank you. Chris?
Chris Dombrowski. Chris Dombrowski.
I had to get my unmute going. Hi there. Um, I have a question. So if what you've done denied.
I have a question. So if what you've done tonight is sending it on to the township board, does it matter what we have to say to you guys? Or should we save it for the board?
I think it matters on both fronts. So I mean, it doesn't hurt to repeat it to two different boards because if it comes back to us, we appreciate that information and what you're concerned about. So but at this point, it is going on to the township board for whenever it's on their agenda. So I would definitely attend that meeting.
Okay, I will, I will definitely go to that. There's a, there's a need for this. That's why there are so many rentals. The people that want to come and fish Lake St. Clair and visit our area is huge. People come here and they spend money in our gas stations, our restaurants, our grocery stores, our launch ramp. I mean, there's a huge amount of dollars that come into our area. And if it wasn't for vacation rentals, what's the Colony Motel, about 10 or 12 rooms? So those people that want to come here would not be able to. And that, but I will save the rest of my comments for the township, the board meeting.
Thank you very much.
Tom. 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 William Odom. William.
I was gone when you called me earlier. Oh, there's Odom. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay. Okay. So this is Karen Odom and my husband is William Odom. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. I'd just like to read a short letter that I submitted on December 8th to the board members. It reads this way, this letter is in regards to the three Airbnbs located on our street. We live at 7840 Inglewood, which is a private, short, dead end street to the lake. We are in the residential zone area and these rentals are commercial business, which is illegal. The one nearest our home has never had less than eight or nine vehicles in the yard. We've counted up to 30 people there at times, not to mention trailer boats, speeding vehicles and dogs off leashes. If they are on leashes, they're the retractable kind and they just let them roam, roam. They don't draw them back in and usually on their cell phones. We would love your help in eliminating this problem. And in addition to this letter, all three of these Airbnbs have been rented out nonstop year around. All last year, as COVID was running rampant, there were still large groups of people coming one after another. Last month, the 7869 McLennan location rented it out for three weeks straight to four men. They were here from, they were out of out of, yeah, working, they were construction workers out of Texas. They were quite sketchy looking. Actually, I was to the point of not wanting to go outside by myself. These Airbnb owners are making money hand over fist at our expense. It's heartbreaking. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's our comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
The only one that I have is Alpha LM. Alpha LM. Alpha LM. And one more time for iPad. Atery.
All right.
Hello.
Larry Pornick at 7889 Lake Drive. I live right across the canal from some of these people, these rentals. You've covered a lot of things, all the talkers did about the things going on. No one mentioned any insurance requirements. These people come in from out of town, they're gone, they can do a lot of damage. They've already had some incidents where police reported because of near misses with boats. These people are renting jet skis out. There's no people, we don't want to call the marine after them. They can't drive the jet skis. They can't drive the pontoon boat the guy has. They've had as many as 18 people, we counted them on the pontoon boat. The pontoons didn't even show out of the water, but they were going out in that thing. So I'm saying, what about the insurance? These people damaged stuff. They're gone back home and we're left with it. Try to get a hold of the owner. He doesn't carry any insurance. There's a ruling on that, whether he'd have to carry? That was my question.
Thank you for your comments. Again, I would encourage you to attend the board meeting when this item's on their agenda.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one emphasis. I'm Dave Mason, Inglewood Drive. And I heard Whitey say, it is a business. They are, vacation rentals are business. We are in our, our one area. It's a zoned residential. I'm just curious about clarification. You can have a business in a residential area or you can't? That's just my, my thought.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all I have.
Christine, I believe we were in receipt if this is the correct person, Kim D A R R A H sent a short-term rental comment in, I don't believe she had that person's chance to speak tonight. So maybe we should read in what she sent to us.
Sure. Would you like me to read that?
Would you please? Appreciate it.
Sure. It's got a header on it of Lake St. Clair Guide Magazine LLC. 7571 Dyke Road, Fairhaven, Michigan. It's a memo addressed to Clay Township Planning Commission from Kim Darra, owner of Lake St. Clair Guide LLC magazine slash websites, subject ordinance regarding vacation rental property dated February 24th, 2021. I have offered to speak on behalf of several owners of short-term rentals in Clay Township, where I have advertised local vacation properties for many years. One of my earliest goals is in producing the Lake St. Clair Guide Magazine was to put Northern Lake St. Clair on the tourist map of destinations. And I think after 20 years, that is certainly happening for us. I have lived in Fairhaven for 25 years and I too have a vacation rental on my immediate property. Through the magazine and website, our cottage has hosted out of state boating, fishing visitors for 12 years without complaint. The vacation rental owners understand and agree, some type of ordinance may be required to ensure each vacation rental is a supplement and not a detriment to our community. The owners would like the board to allow us some input to the ordinance so we may continue to make these homes a success for our community. One, community investment. Besides initial property and present tax costs, all vacation rentals in my contact have invested thousands and some well over 100,000 to upgrade and improve properties and seawalls. Every home advertised through Lake St. Clair Guide has done a service to their neighborhood and certainly do not want to host guests that may misuse our properties. Two, quality of guests. Most guests are fishermen and families who spend more time on the water than at the home. Midwestern area visitors and as far from Maryland, Florida and California make a large investment themselves traveling with boats to Clay Township. They are respectful of our properties and the neighbors. Three, goodwill. Thousands of travelers each year discover, refer and return to Clay Township. Professional fishermen from television regularly stay in our homes. The 2020 guest who was a policeman from Ohio, bringing his two sons here to fish for the first time, told me I didn't know a place like this still existed. Four, support. Our guests purchase local marine services, fuel, bait, grocery, boutique shopping, DNR launch fees, restaurants and support all their employees. While we as homeowners hire local maintenance and cleaning personnel to maintain a safe and clean environment. Our vacation rental owners have been good stewards to the community. Yes, certainly this is a business. However, investment is continually required to maintain the highest level of standards to keep our guests deciding to spend their hard earned vacation money back in Clay Township. We hope the board will consider the many positives are safe and very responsible and thoughtfully run vacation rentals due for our town when finalizing any ordinances which could prohibit us and others in maintaining this type of investment in the future. If the vacation rental ordinance is to proceed, the owners would appreciate if you would allow some verbiage amendments expressed at the February 24th board meeting. Like most homes around the waterfront in Clay Township, each cottage home apartment is unique in size and shape. We hope you will allow some flexibility for the owners to continue renting as has been advertised. We are fortunate to have several of the same families returning each year and would not want to disrupt their future vacation here in town. Thank you. We look forward to participating in any further discussion to make the board fully aware of the successful history of this business, enriching our local community.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate you reading that. At this particular point, unless somebody interrupts us, I think we're done with public comments. So I am going to move on to item number 14, which would be adjournment.
All moved.
Okay.
That was by Keith Fellows, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing no one opposed, I thank everyone very much for participating in the meeting. And I know it was long, but thank you again. It was a lot of hard work and we'll see where we end up from here. Okay. And Crystal, tune in. Thank you for pointing out my mistake in my email I sent out with the dates. I apologize. But thank you for catching that. I appreciate it. All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.